Right, yes. We're just right on time getting started with this portion of our meeting. And I'm really delighted to be welcoming representatives of the Student Advisory Committee to be talking with us today. We, I'm sure we'll have some other board members coming in in a minute. I do want to apologize, we have a couple of board members who are away on out-of-town travel, so I know they're, they're going to be disappointed to miss tonight, but they, they can watch it on our, on our videotape of this, as well as, we did have one board member recently resign, so we're a little low, but we will, we very much appreciate you coming and joining us today. So, Mr. Perrier, would you like to introduce the students that you brought with you today? Absolutely, we, we always love to have students come and join us. Oh, alright, sure. Sure, however you'd like to do it, that would be fine.
How about now? Should I start, want me to start over? Take two? Okay. So my name is Craig Perrier, I'm the High School Specialist for Social Studies, and along with Dr. Alice Riley, the co-sponsor for SAC, the Student Advisory Committee, the Superintendent. Each year, we are tasked with the Superintendent, by the Superintendent, with some issues or topics that are related to the greater Fairfax community, that, that deserve student input, right? It's, decisions made on those would be informed with student input. During the school year, more recently, 102 delegates from our, from our high schools convene once a month to work on those charges, in order to produce a presentation at the end of the year. Tonight is that presentation. The presentation team you see up here, our volunteer members of the SAC, four of those members are here tonight, and I want to ask them to introduce themselves right now.
Okay, I'm Emma Choi, I'm a junior at Marshall High School, obviously I'll be at Marshall next year too, but this summer, I'm attending the Iowa Writers Studio.
Hello, my name is Tameh Manwana, I'm a senior from Woodson High School, and next year I'll be attending MIT.
Hi, I'm Maddie Choi, I go to Marshall High School, and next year I will be at the Naval Academy.
Hi, my name is Daniel Viegas, I'm from Stewart High School. This summer, I'm planning on just traveling Latin America with my friends for a few months, and then later going to the College of William and Mary.
And just one final point before we get into the presentation, this is a newer aspect, this is in its second year. At the end of the presentation, you'll hear recommendations that the SAC is giving to the Superintendent, as recommendations for themes for next year, right? And that is actually a welcomed addition, or welcome adaptation to the SAC of the past. So without further ado, I have to pass it off to our first presenter.
Awesome, thank you. So thank you again for joining us today, we hope that this input will be valuable to you. Our first chosen focus topic was mental health, as you can see. So just expanding on that, we discussed what is the definition of mentally healthy, and that is to foster positive relationships, retain resiliency in the face of diversity, and increasing capacity to cope with stress and other problems. So it was very important to us to not only discuss mental health, but define what that is, and how we can address it accurately, by addressing all parts of that. And mental health, not only as a disease, mental, with, mental disease, but also with stress, which is a very prevalent part of our culture here. And then next, we had the opportunity to look at our youth surveys, which I think that are sophomores and seniors take, and we compared that with national records. So as you can see, the statistics up here are not where we thought they would be, we thought they would be lower, which was disappointing to us. But looking at the statistics has really helped us to see what, how big this is a problem to us, which is interesting, because every once in a while, there's a tragedy, and then everyone is very concerned about mental health, and we want to do something about it, but life goes on, and we tend to either forget about it, or just move on with their lives. So I think it's really important to keep, to keep advocating for these things. So for, as the SAC, we've been trying to continually advocate for these objects, and create ways to fix them. So next, we have mental health literacy. So some things we did this year, we had focused presentations from mental health and wellness specialists, which I think Tameh will talk about later on. We, one thing that the SAC wanted to do last year was develop a database of mental health activities, so we could share throughout the county. So what we did with that was, we had discussions with, because we have four delegates from every school, and we all shared things we have done over the past school years, or things we've done in the course of our schools. And we use a Google form to document those, and we shared them with each other, so we can know what worked, what didn't work, what was really valuable about these kind of things, things we can improve on, and that was really valuable, just to know what the whole county's doing to improve these kind of things, and just to share ideas.
Okay, so, next topic, is our minds matter? So, a lady came in to speak with us, her name is Lauren Anderson, and she, along with her mother, helped establish the Josh Anderson Foundation. He, Josh Anderson was actually a student within FCPS, however, he ended his life after going, after going through stress, however, he didn't really reach out to anyone, or talk to any of his family members about it. So, in his name, Laura decided to create a foundation that would basically help students to be able to know that they have a place to go to when they're experiencing these issues. And one of the branches from the Josh Anderson Foundation is Our Minds Matter. It basically hopes to make these clubs within high schools, so that they're really student-led organizations that help spread, spread mental health and awareness across the student body, and really students have a chance to make an impact in the area. And Woodson's actually going to start making a club like that next year, so we have students who are already signed up, and are moving towards making that club next year, so I'm really excited to come back and visit, and see what our high school's able to do with that. Next topic, and the recommendations that we had, with regards to mental health, was that we should share mental health databases with the FCPS principals. Dr. Poole, who's Woodson's principal right now, actually did something similar to this, in which, at the beginning of his term as principal, he had a school-wide poll, in which he asked students various questions, along with, what improvements could be made to help decrease your stress level? Do you feel comfortable with your teachers and your counselors? Have you felt depressed in any way, and why? And these sort of questionnaires and polls really helped Dr. Poole, Dr. Poole make changes within the school, to really help facilitate student, teacher, counselor conversation about mental health. Next point that we want to recommend is really encouraging relationships within schools, between students, administration, counselors, specialists. Because really, when that boundary is broken between those two bodies, it really helps facilitate conversation, and a better working community. For example, Dr. Poole comes to speak with leadership, once a month, and it really helps break down that barrier between the students and the administration, so that leadership can get stuff done around the school.
Okay, so our second chosen focus topic for SAC this year was school environment, and we chose to kick off this topic with a focus question of how can we ensure every student feels safe and happy in their school? And through our roundtable discussions, through SAC and all the different delegates from our different schools, we determined that students should feel safe in the environment in which they learn, both physically and mentally, kind of like the mental health that we were talking about earlier. And also, that we wish to increase awareness of emergency procedures, for example lockdown drills, fire drills, things of that nature, and gaining familiarity with these emergency procedures. And basically just having a good sense of emergency preparedness through every school. Okay. So, we broke this topic of school environment down into two subtopics, of health and physical education, and also coordination of safety and environmental health. In the first area of health and physical education, we determined that goal-oriented thinking would be most efficient in, in creating goals and working towards that, especially in terms of sleep and health, and especially depression awareness, which we talked about earlier in this presentation. And then in terms of coordinator, safety and environmental health, we discussed a lot about the difference between the words "safety" and "security," and we determined that safety was the feeling of safeness that you have within a school or a building, that you build through trust between admin and students and teachers, where security is the actual act of having emergency preparedness drills and things like that. And then that also led down, led to our second point of lockdown drills, and how we feel that sometimes it is a little lackadaisical, and we don't take them maybe as seriously as we need to, just because we know that they're coming, and things like that, and so maybe, creating a sense of safety in creating like more strict lockdown drills. And so our recommendations with this topic include situational crisis management and health education, so that we have a greater literacy in knowing what crisis management holds, and knowing what to do in terms of crises. And crises is usually come up on very unexpected times and things like that, so just knowing what to do in times of surprise, when you're surprised. Makes sense to the education more tangible and realistic for students, so that touches back on my first point of how students sometimes think it's unrealistic, because we know that the drills are coming, and they seem like not realistic, because you know, in terms of a tornado, or a fire, or something, things like that, you can't really have a 30-minute, 10-minute, five-minute warning that those things are going to happen. Fire and lockdown drills during lunch, because through our roundtable discussions, we also discussed how we usually knew which class period these things would be happening, and you know, you can't predict a crisis, and so these things sometimes do happen during like transition periods between classes, or during lunch, or maybe right at the start of school, and maybe not everyone's in their class yet. And so we recommend that maybe these fire drills happen during unexpected times, when everyone's kind of in a transition period. And also, lastly, we wanted to hold school-wide campaigns to raise awareness for school safety, and maybe do this through SAC, where all the schools have, have a little like, we can all get together and listen to each other's, what we're all doing together, what other schools are doing, so that these school-wide campaigns can maybe be normalized throughout the county, to raise awareness for school safety. And that brings us to topic three.
So going off of what Maddie said, our next topic was student, student balance and wellness. So there are six points that we have listed on the presentation right there, that you can read off of. Many of these things are, both of our, all of our committee members already explained. And the reason why this is really important is because FCPS has over 100,000 students in our county, that's bigger than some, that's bigger than some cities in America, so we really need to make sure that our top priority is making sure that the students in our schools feel safe, and that they're, that they feel like they're balanced, and that they're well, just so then we don't have those unforeseen tragedies that Tameh was mentioning before, because our welfare of the students is the top priority for our county. So going on to the next slide. We had different presenters come into our SAC, and bring up key points that sometimes we don't really want to think about. The first one that we listed was distracted driving. This was a presentation that was facilitated by Captain Blakely and Detective Grimm. These two gentlemen came into our SAC, and they were explaining the statistics behind distracted driving in our county. Most of the time, students like us were, we don't really think about those things, because it's something that, you know, you think that's never going to happen to you, but he really did make us reflect on the reality of the problem that we're facing. He gave us a quick example of the five-second rule, where we kind of just covered our eyes, and we weren't, we couldn't see anything for five seconds, and you think five seconds isn't a lot of time until you actually do that, and you realize that if you're going 35 miles an hour, you're going pretty much the length of a football field, and examples like that, I think really made SAC reflect on that, and those reflections really did contribute to us giving back to our schools, mainly through different, it's actually going to be listed in the recommendations later on, but bringing in cars in front of the schools, like the wrecked cars, that, I know a lot of schools have already started those, but I know that now, recently, another, a couple other schools joined the list of putting those cars out, and having these school-wide campaigns, where they would actually focus in on these problems. And then we also had the other presenter, Dr. Payne, she came in, she's the coordinator for FC, for PE and health education in Fairfax County, and we had a really long discussion when she came in. We focused in on a lot of methods that would improve health education, specifically LGBTQ education, a topic that many people think that's very controversial at this stage, but it's something that we, SAC thought we really needed to talk about. The other major point that we hit was an updated FLE curriculum, just because we think that it's a little out-of-dated. I know that some of the comments that students had were, that this curriculum seemed like it was just, hadn't been touched since the eighties, and I think that FCPS really does, does care for their students, and that we really do need to have these discussions, and update the curriculum, just so then it's a little bit more modernized to our own society nowadays. And then finally, the recommendations that we do have for the school board is, this is a topic, the first recommendation that we had is actually from one of the delegates from our, one of the delegates of SAC that actually brought in victims and offenders of distracted driving, and they actually held assemblies in their school, that would raise awareness in correlation with these distracted driving campaign weeks that were held in schools. And then the other comment that Captain Blakely made was in, joining in the International Bike Drive, I mean Bike and Walk to School Day, so that's just something that we just wanted to kick in right there. And then just have other guest speakers to come in and speak to these students, because it's the most powerful way to actually transmit this message, is with those face-to-face interactions with students. We believe that that's the best strategy in combat, in combating this problem here in the county. And then also, I think all of us here signed the phones-out-touchdown pledge with Captain Blakely when he came in, and we actually went back to our schools, and we got other students in our leadership classes, and so on, to sign on, and that's our recommendation for topic three.
So the, so the, the panel now is going to share the suggestions for next year's topics. The four are listed right up here, each of them to go through one at a time, the topics for next year.
So our first one is mental health and wellness, continuing on that, our first point for that is continue to focus on mental health and wellness. I touched this before, but I, we, everyone at SAC thinks that this is a continuing problem, and it can't be addressed just a couple times throughout the year, it needs to be a very sustained thing. So we want to encourage school communities to continue with that. And one way we can do that, I think, is encouraging connections between counselors and school psychologists, and school social workers and kids, because one thing we found that was common amongst a lot of the delegates, is that they either didn't know who their counselor was, or they just hadn't met with them in a very long time. So, just making sure that people know who they can go to, to talk about things, if they need help, any kind of things, I think that's really important. And then building inclusive communities, connection to school, immunity. Connection to school is the best way we can keep kids healthy and safe, because if kids feel connected to their schools, they feel like they have a family, they have a place to go to, they have a place to turn to, so that's super important. And just continuing talks with people who create things, talking to Dr. Payne was incredibly helpful, because a lot of kids just did not know where the health education came from, so just to know what we can teach, what we can't teach, different ways we can work around that was really valuable, and to continue that conversation, to have the kids feel like we have a voice in these kind of things, is crucial.
Just wanted to build off what she said about the second suggestion, was really about inclusive communities. Another delegate from SAC, who could have unfortunately not attend today, talked about having a calendar for the school year that addressed other, other religious holidays, specifically Muslim holidays, because as of right now, it seems that the calendar definitely falls around certain holidays, holidays, and like prefers, people most likely agree with the Christian holiday, and how we're not in school during the Christmas time, and Easter usually, and stuff like that. So, he really wanted to stress here today that we should really try to include holidays for the Muslim community, for the Jewish community, because unfortunately, for some, for some students, they would take time off school, and have to come back and make up work, and it's simply because of the faith that they practice, unless because they're trying to be bad students, and they have to catch up, where some people who don't practice that religion benefit from the calendar that we have today. So, really to build a more inclusive community, that's something that hopefully we'll discuss more next year.
My third recommended topic is feedback for school grading slash policies, to follow up the FCPS initiative on more efficient grading, and the new FCPS grading policy. Through our SAC delegation discussions, a lot of people did recognize that FCPS has taken steps on, I guess, normalizing the grades, and getting a standard grading policy across the board, but a lot of students felt like this policy wasn't really being implemented, or they felt like it was unfair, or some schools were doing things that they liked, where their own school wasn't doing, and so we wanted to just maybe somehow, normalizing it more.
Okay, so our last recommendation is the budget. Yeah. Like Emma already mentioned, when we had Dr. Payne in, we thought it was a really good benefit for her coming in, just because we saw that transparency that we had between Fairfax County and the students, like we, like students actually like, actually like asking those questions, like why can't we have this, why can't we have that? And I think that one of the reasons why we are recommending having this as a focus topic for next year, is just because students in SAC really do want to have those, want to ask those tough questions, and want to hear about like why certain decisions are being made, and why certain things are being passed, why certain things are being cut, and they actually want to have an input on these things. So we just really want the school board to also charge SAC with the budget, and have some, have some presentations about that, like we did this year, so then students actually feel that transparency between our administration above, and the students in Fairfax County.
So with those four recommendations, that concludes our presentation. What typically happens over the summer, myself and Dr. Riley meet with the Superintendent, share the four suggested SAC recommendation topics for next year, and those are either approved, or modified, or whatever, whatever happens will happen, but those are the four recommendations that will go forward for the new Superintendent. So, this is our team working on the presentation, and finally, we could not have, Faraz was our one, he just called, he cannot make it, he's stuck in traffic, but we, we understand there might be some questions in a Q&amp;A session?
Yes, and I first want to thank you for an excellent presentation. You did a great job of letting us know, very, very meaty recommendations, and I think you've done a lot of really great work. I have several board members who had questions or comments, and I'm going to start with Mrs. Schultz.
So if we can go to the slide that I think, I'm sorry, I think it was maybe, nope, keep going back. It was that, the slide. So I'm wondering, on these bullets, what, in, in the group, what was the difference for you between mental health and emotional health? I'm wondering why those two different terms, and what that means? Do you have any, you have some feedback on that?
Um, I know, okay, that's a good question, but we didn't really recognize the difference between that in our specific SAC meetings, but I know, I think what we were going for in the difference between mental and emotional health, is that mental health kind of goes more with like, the, the, like the medical, I guess, term of mental health awareness, where like depression and things like that would be like a mental condition that we need to treat like invisible.
Right, so what you're saying is basically, you could have an emotional health issue without actually having a mental health issue.
Right, and then emotional health would be like a smaller niche within that.
That's a very interesting insight from a student perspective. And then when you, I'm wondering what, and I think you used the word sustained. What does a more, instead of, you know, because you might have a week, you know, an anti-stress week? And some of the feedback that I've given, in some of the meetings that I've been in in schools, is don't have that like the last week of April. Like have that earlier in the year, so that you, you get tools. But what does sustained look like to you? Because it's one thing, I mean, you know, I don't know what our ratio is on counselors to students, but it's probably hundreds to one. So, you know, a counselor, you know, knowing who your counselor is, okay, what else? What else does sustainment look like, that you feel like that would be a good tool or resource that would help in the day-to-day life?
Right. I mean, one thing, there obviously is the counselor thing, but I realize that not all counselors can go to every single student all the time. I think it's more about somehow putting some kind of, we're not, we haven't talked about like exactly how to do this, but putting some kind of thing in place where kids feel they can go to like a designated person, just building relationships, so it's not necessarily building one specific construct, of like if you feel sad, like you're the person to go to, it just making sure that people have a person to go to.
I know a suggestion that Dr. Riley, she's the other, the person that's in charge of us, she recommended that basically, once per quarter, that each school try and have some sort of event, of something, something of the sort, to kind of like facilitate, basically, like student balance and wellness throughout the school. For example, like at Woodson, I know during second quarter, we participate in PS I Love You Day, which was a day started by a student from New York City, whose father committed suicide, and she just talked about how like she wished she could have told her father that she loved him more. So at Woodson, what we do is we give around Purple Hearts that say, PS I Love You, we write, and every single note, we have, every single locker, we have a sticky note that says a nice message. So that's one thing that we do, then like another thing that we do, which is the week after AP exams, I believe, we have a stress less, laugh more week, which each day is a different event, like one day we had ice cream truck, and every student got free ice cream. Now that day, we have like a photo booth and lunch, another day we have like coloring books. So those are just two of the examples that we had throughout the year, so I think.
The reason I ask this, because it concerns, it doesn't concern me. When an adult tells you, well, maybe that would look like something once a quarter, I don't real, I'm not really interested in what the adults in the system like suggest you do, what I'm interested in is, what are the stu, like what does it look like to you? What do you, what do you, like, having a whole week of stress less, laugh more, like is that helpful? Do you look forward to it? Or would, you know, things sprinkled out more often, or, I mean, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question, just because I know that just having one week isn't good enough, there's 36 week in the, six weeks in the semester, or the school year, so just one week wouldn't be enough, but one of the things that we did talk about in SAC was potentially having those, Our Minds Matter, like, because they have activities that Our Minds Matter actually creates, having those implemented usually through your home rooms, that's something that our school's actually talking about right now, and that's just, they're quick 10-minute workshops that you can have with the students. It would be a little difficult just to get all the teachers to maybe support this, and be able to be really good facilitators, yet we think that that's something that could potentially, you know, be an icebreaker for students, to just have those relationships and build trust within one another, and their, and their administration.
And I know other colleagues want to talk, but just one last thing that my, because I've looked at other school systems that do this, and the idea of a connected adult, you know, there's some school systems down near Richmond that have literally every child in the building, there's an adult in the building that has a group of, you know, maybe six, or eight, or maybe 10, and they meet once a week. Ev, everyone, I mean, so their person might be the janitor, their person might be the assistant principal, but everybody's got their little, kind of, their little clan, and it keeps them grounded. That's one thing that I've seen, and another is, oh, you were just saying it. Oh. Get the other one, it was a good one too. I don't remember. But it is finding the ways in which you feel it, not the way that we think, oh, we heard that they need more, and then we go off and do policy at you, and still policy with you, and then I think it's a lot better that we're, we're engaging you and giving you what you need, instead of what we think you need. You see what I'm saying? So, sometimes advisory committees carry over, like if there's something that's really good, and we think that that's very important, like the ACSD, they took their charge, and they made it a two-year charge. And for me, I'm wondering if, because the way that this topic touches every single student, and really can affect your outcomes, it could affect your grades, it could affect your, you know, what college you get into, what you do, if it, if this doesn't almost warrant a second charge next year, and you really go into it, and you really go into the schools and figure out, what does it look like? You know, then, then it's really stomach.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you very much. This was a very thoughtful report. You raised excellent issues, I just liked the way you presented it, I like it in bullet form. Very, it makes us listen to you, rather than, you know, reading a document, so very, very well done. And the four of you are amazingly successful young people, I mean, astounding, when you, you know, tell us what all of your plans are, and where you're going, and what you're doing, you're going, wow. So on the one hand, you know, it's exciting to hear our students, because after all, we're here because of you guys, to hear how successful you are. So that, that just blows me away. You know, four people so distinguished, all in one room, amazing. Okay. And your suggestions of, you know, how to make things better for students, and the topics particularly, mental health, stress, wellness. And your suggestions of, you know, how to make things better for students and the topics particularly um mental health, stress, wellness, et cetera. Um, I think you give us excellent ideas of how to continue to improve that, and I can see how we as a school system can do those things. Cuz some of them are, you know, already out there, we need to do more of them, we need to continue to be more thoughtful, so that gives an excellent roadmap of uh of initiatives that need to continue on and need to be developed more. Um, so I can see how in our own environment, in schools, how we can help and support kids better. One of the real tough things that we talk about is the world that's around you. And you do, you know, for better or for worse, where we live kind of in a pressure cooker world here in northern Virginia, we're all type A people. And tremendous, tremendous pressure, um and you all have made it, in spite of, because of, you never know. One of the things that we talk about, and I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing. We know that in some private schools, they offer no APs, but then they're very selective private schools to get into in the first place. Some schools limit the number of AP courses you can take, and then we hear huge concern from parents. Or students or what have you is, well, are you gonna get into the the college/university program of your choice? And it, and so it's, it's conflicting. Um, and, you know, everybody wants you all to be as successful as possible and be as successful as you are. But could you comment on what your advice would be to when we actually, you know, set? The overall policies, cuz there's a lot of, you know, yin and yang. If we actually limited. What you could take or what you could choose, is that a good thing? Is it a bad thing? Do we help students and parents try to figure this out? You know, what is a college admissions? And you guys are very, very successful. I'd love to know how many API courses you all have taken.
I think we could all talk for hours about this.
Yeah, but tell, tell what is, you were successful, you've made it, you know, you've got incredible resumes.
I was not there yet.
That's all, yeah, but you can, you're, you're on your way, but what would, what do you wanna say to us about that? Cuz we're conflicted.
I think that, well, okay, I'm taking eight IBs this year, but for the IB diploma, you need to have.
You have to take that, yeah.
Right, you have to take at least six IB classes, but I think I chose IB because I felt restrained by the number of classes that AP offered, cuz I wanted. A liberal arts education in high school, so I chose IB. Um, so I think that classes are very personal, cuz I've talked to a lot of my friends about this, but some of my friends are only taking two IBs. Um, so I don't know if that.
It's possible to get two IBs?
Well, they're not doing the diploma certificate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know, that would be a disaster. Two IBs, oh gosh, nightmares, but um I think that there definitely would be a lot of outrage in the student population since we are so competitive. Um, cuz part of it is the competitive factor, but also just people like challenging themselves and having that label of having IB or AP, I think helps us like determine which courses are right for us. Um, do you wanna expand on that?
Um, yeah, so I've taken, I think, taken seven um IB classes, um of course of my high school career, and I think. Limiting how many a student could take would, if anything, be negative. The student populations, I feel like the fact that there is no limit. Um, when it comes to AP and IB courses allows for students to really become more independent and have the responsibility along with their parents. Um, of course, of being able to choose what's um best for them, cuz maybe some students have a really free schedule and don't do any extracurricular activities and are able to take, you know, ten. Eleven, or however, I don't know, activity number, or like students who are um very busy with extracurricular activities, you can only take like five. So I feel that it's best to, uh, in my opinion as a student, I don't know how everyone else feels, but to leave it open to really allow the students to um kind of decide what's best for them, and um. In kind of tying like number of AP and IB courses you take to reducing the stress, um, I know that when I came into. High school, my freshman year, it was very stressful in that I felt like I had to take like all of the AP courses that I possibly could, but wanted to get into my dream school. Um, but I think um over the course and definitely now that I've been accepted um into school, and what I've learned back from the admissions counselors and talking with them. Is that maybe we need to tell our students more, I like, I wish I knew as well as a freshman, that. It's way more than just what your report card says and what you, what your um transcript says. Um, like I know many people who have taken ten, eleven, twelve AP courses, which didn't get into um. You know, the schools that they wanted to get into, but they didn't partake in the other extracurricular activities or just, they didn't do stuff in their free time, so I feel like it's important that we somehow just. Show kids, like I wish I knew at the time, that it's, what looks good is way more than just like how many like super hard and difficult classes you take. There's way more to being a person and a brilliant student than just that, so I feel like it's, one, good that we should definitely leave it open, there be no limits, and then two. Um, somehow express to students clearly, maybe by having alumni come back and talk to them and show them how.
You will be invited back. You're going to MIT, right?
Yeah.
Very impressed.
Thank you, yeah, so two, and just make sure students know that you don't need to take, you know, seventeen AP courses to get into college.
I agree.
From the rest of you, yeah.
Um, so Tim was the only one doing AP of the four of us, but I know for IB in of itself, it does have restrictions. I guess it's like opposite restrictions where you do, if you wanna um pursue the IB diploma, which is like what you need to do if you want like that check of you're taking the most rigorous courses possible. Which like, so if we were to limit it, then like if you took like the limit of AP or IB classes, then that checkbox would be checked, right? Like you would be taking the most rigorous courses. Yeah, we know this from all like the college little like admissions panels, they always say that. But um, so the IB diploma like does have its own restrictions, and so I feel like if we limited the IB diploma classes, it'd only be. Taking a certain amount and not, and therefore like forfeiting your ability to get the IB diploma, I think some people might not like that, like I know. I've, I've really enjoyed IB, and I think my sister has too, like we love IB, and I think it's really helped me grown as a student a lot, like I really. It's like a cliche thing to say, but I think it's really helped me grow as a whole person, like have a worldview through theory of knowledge, but also like relating my English classes to my history classes and just having this whole. Um, holistic education, I've really enjoyed it, and I think that we may be, I guess, this is a dramatic word, but like depriving students of that whole experience if we do get rid of the diploma. Because then you would effectively, I think, be getting rid of theory of knowledge, right, and and class hours and things like that, which are things that inherently come with the IB diploma. And so I think in that sense, I I don't think that it would be really beneficial to cut the classes, and also like, sorry, I have the like to say.
I, I really appreciate this, this is great.
Thanks, um, but it's like when we go to those panels, they always, every single panel that I went to explicitly. Took time to explain that it didn't matter if your AP or IB classes were limited, that if you were taking the most rigorous classes available to you through the school, then they would. Evaluate your, your application in the context of your school and what they offered, and so I think. If colleges are being transparent about that, and if we are also being transparent that like. If you take the most rigorous courses available, then the colleges will see that, so I guess it's kind of like for both things, if we do end up limiting it, then we can like make it known that. Colleges do know that if you're taking the most rigorous courses available, they'll take that into consideration, but I'm on the side for not limiting it, cuz I think it's really helps me grow as a student and as a person.
Thank you, yes, last opinion on it.
So Fairfax County is the tenth largest school district, so I think that any decision that Fairfax County makes, um, any college around the nation's gonna know what it's about. I know that in um, when you apply to college and they send your transcripts, you also send the school profile. The school profile actually lists what's offered and what the regulations are at the school, and if you were to send and explain that there was, there were, there would be a limit. Um, I think that colleges would understand that, you know, the student is actually partaking in the hardest curriculum available. Personally, I'm a bilingual diploma candidate, so I wanna say that um. If you were to limit my classes, I wouldn't be able to have that status. Um, and I actually was a transfer student from Falls Church, I went to Jeb Stuart High School exclusively for the IB diploma, just because I thought that. Um, you really did need to challenge yourself the most you could, and I think that most students at my school at least know their limit and know what classes um are available to them. The one thing I can say is that I think that sometimes um the regulations aren't always in favor of the students. Um, specifically when I was, um, students that are not in the IB diploma track or were in the IB diploma track, um, it seemed that it was very hard to step away from a class. If you thought that you were um too, like it was too much, it was too much work for you, um, and you had to drop the class, it seemed that. Um, the counselors sometimes, um, it wasn't, it wasn't as easy as, as, as it could have been to drop a class. And then you're actually putting extra stress on a kid that doesn't need that stress, so I think that if that became something that became a little bit more flexible, that students. Could sign up for, let's say, four AP classes, but then needed to drop two AP classes because it was too much for them, I think that there should be more flexibility and. Not be penalized as badly as it is right now for dropping a class and not be as difficult. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you very much for all answering that. You guys are just amazing. How lucky we are to have young people like you that we serve. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Seines?
Yeah, thank you, yes, this is amazing. Thank you so much, and I wanna thank Mr. Perrier as well, and please um forward our thanks to Dr. Riley, year in and year out, you guys. Do this, support these students, and um staff does, and and that's why, you know, they're able to present all this good information for us, so we know that it takes work. Um, so just a couple of questions, I wanted to first ask, uh, environmental health, that's also on your list of six topics, and I wondered how you define or describe environmental health?
Um, I think that we characterize that as what's going on around you, uh, school setting wise, not, I guess, the plans that are around you.
Those are important.
Those are important, but uh, uh, we focus in on um the school atmosphere, I think with that.
Okay, like the culture of the school and what, yeah, okay, thank you, I was curious. Um, so and following up a bit on um Mrs. Strauss's questions, um. Do you feel like, because I think it's true, you guys represent, I think, a large proportion of our students who are very driven. To get to the best college, check that box that you've taken all the most challenging courses and all that, but. We know that our schools are not full of people like that, right? Um, that there are also other students, and I wonder if you sense um that. There are different kinds of stress for students with different motivations, different lives, um, is it hard to be a kid who is? Not striving for college in your high schools? Is it hard to be a kid who's not that interested in checking that box? Um, do they also have, you know, maybe, do they bring different kind of stresses to school? Do you know?
Um.
Okay, so I go to Jeb Stuart High School, um, you guys probably have heard about it, um. So I personally feel that sometimes the IB kids are put as a priority in our school, even when it comes to scheduling classes itself. Um, everything seems to contour around our schedules because we need to be placed into those IB classes first, and, you know, we have to, we're the top priority for the school. It will, so it seems, and then it seems that sometimes kids that are in regular classes that, you know, are struggling even in those regular classes are, are. Like, they're new to the country, they seem to not be as prioritized, um, when it comes to the type of classes they take, I know that in our school, sometimes they take. Um, they put ESOL students in classes that don't require SOLs, just so then the students can just kind of be in a class. That doesn't necessarily do anything for them, and the teacher's really kind of not doing anything, so um, I think that sometimes they. Focus all their attention on us, which, which is good for, which is good for all of us here, but it's not good for a lot of other students, and it really sucks that that's how it is. And um, I guess that's something I'll leave you guys to, to, to think about, but um, yeah.
Um, I know at Woodson, um, like I said um a bit before, how Dr. Paul, our principal, took a poll that basically asked students like. What do you like about Woodson, what do you not like about Woodson? Um, and I think, kind of going based on what your question, um, the most surprising statistic that we found. Was that a lot of the stress that we do find is actually not necessarily geared towards students who tend to be like self-driven, it's the students. Who kind of feel like they're underappreciated because they're not the ones who tend to be like, oh, I'm gonna go to like um Harvard, um, or do you go some um. You know, um, top-tier school, and a lot of them said like, oh, I feel underappreciated, or I feel like alone because I'm part of a minority demographic. Or I feel like because my interest is more in the theater department rather than I'm taking all these AP classes, I feel like my interests are underappreciated. Um, and so they kind of feel stressed and feel alone, and so they kind of feel sad um in that sense, but they don't feel like they are able to speak up as much because. It tends to be that at Woodson, oh, all the stress tends to just be around the kids who like take all the super hard classes, so that's why they're stressful, because they have so much work to do. Um, but it was really, it was a huge eye-opener, um, for me especially, because I am more the demographic, demographic of being stressed because of the school load and not so much of. Um, the other students, um, it was a big eye-opener to see that there are other issues that people go through, and I feel like that's something that we definitely need to address um next year and going. Fourth, that there are different types of stress that students experience, and I feel like, like having the databases sent out to principals, or having more principals conduct their own polls. Um, like what Dr. Paul did, um, would really help um different areas kind of understand what their school particularly needs to focus on. Um, so now for other schools, um, like for Anadale, they may have a different environment, so they may have something else they need to focus on, so I feel like if we're able to. Have these polls, have the databases sent out, have we understand, why do you have stress, um, why do you feel this way, and I think we can really start to facilitate the discussion and have more specific. Um, points that would help tackle these issues that students face.
Thank you, cuz I mean, I think that's good going forward, is to have a deeper understanding, a broader understanding maybe for the board. Of what the different kinds of stresses are for kids, cuz it's not, I think we see you all uh better probably than we see some of the other kids, so, thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, I, I do have a lot of questions, but since, you know, time, we are limited by time, we have a. Work on other, on other topic, on other uh presentation at six thirty, so I'm gonna just ask you one question. From maybe slightly different angle, but to a certain extent, somewhat similar to what uh Mrs. Strauss have asked you earlier. Uh, I remember, yeah, one of you mentioning about maybe inconsistency among schools in implementing grading policy. And if I wanna make some, some assumptions, you know, based upon that comment, is that. When you talk about. Incons, pointing out inconsistency, maybe, you know, students cared about. The differences in grades they receive, even though might have performed uh the same way, but. Teachers might apply different criteria or giving a second chance, is that, is that where you're coming from?
Um, that was me who, who made the inconsistent comment. Um, I think there's like two levels to it, where like, I guess, students do complain about inconsistencies on like the, their own school level, but then also inconsistencies. Across the FCPS as a whole, and I, the inconsistency I was referencing was across FCPS as a whole, where we had discussions about grading policies at SAC. And where different delegates from different schools would come up and talk about their, we specifically talked about remediation policies, and some schools are complaining that they had like a one-take. Type of remediation policy, where the first grade you get is the grade you get, and you can't retake it, whereas other schools were like, you can remediate as many times as you need to get that A. And so people were saying that that was like extremely unfair in the way that some schools, they thought, I guess, were setting them up for failure in that you only get one chance, whereas other schools. An A might not represent the actual knowledge.
Okay, that's where I'm trying to go, I mean, inasmuch as I wanna see consistency in implementation among all schools. And among all teachers, even within a given school, when you go to college, it's not gonna be like that. You know, professors, they're gonna, you know, each professor is gonna exercise complete autonomy, independence from other professors. And gonna use his or her own criteria in giving out grades, and you'll see huge inconsistencies. Good or bad, that's the reality you will be faced with once you go there, but when you talk about those inconsistencies. That it seems to me that the bottom line is that students care about the grades they are getting.
Yes.
If somebody is unfairly getting a better grade because got second and third chance, that it is unfair, why? Because. Because I cared about my grade, my grade should be as good as that person's, or even better.
Amount, if I put in the same amount of work as Daniel, and I get a B and Daniel gets a B, and then Daniel can remediate that up with ten A. I think they feel like that's unfair, where two people are putting in the same amount of work, but that amount of work is not being reflected.
I don't, I don't disagree, but when one student's cared about, because I have my own two kids, go through school system.
Right.
And they deeply cared about their grades, and I knew why, because not only that, they would get a complaint from their own parents, including me. But also they cared about, you know, what based upon the kinds of grade they are getting, it may determine which college they will be admitted to.
Right.
So they cared about the which colleges they go to, correct? You know, you guys done very well, three of you, I'm sure you will do well next year as well. But, but, so there here is uh maybe student created, student aided. Aided stress, because you cared about, students cared about grades that affect the college admission, and you guys do. Care about which college you wanna go to, and that. And that also all leads to a number of, number of AP and IB courses students wanna take. At the same time, you know, people talk about, we gotta do something to alleviate this kind of a stress. So there, that's the dichotomy, that's the dilemma we are in. On one hand, students themselves also create stress, and that we are supposed to help them to reduce their stress. So how do you do that?
Well, I think, I agree that it is, a lot of stress, or at least a portion of it, is student created, but I think that's inherent in just the system of grading, where you are being, I guess, essentially ranked between other students. Like, I know FCPS doesn't rank, and I'm extremely grateful for that. But, like, the system of grading itself has an inherent risk and, and effect of having students compare themselves to each other within their grades, and that does create stress, because, I mean, we are like a, I guess, a small portion of the student body where we do, are, where we're very like self-driven, and a lot of that drive comes from wanting to better ourselves, and like, a lot of the time that comes against, um, comparing ourselves to others and, and getting the A. So, I don't know, I don't know, I don't have any recommendations.
I don't know, I'm just gonna say something really quick. Um, I think the other discrepancy that we were talking about in SAC was just between schools, and I know that in schools, they have like the department meetings where they actually like, you know, discuss with how they're gonna be grading things and all that. But the one discrepancy that we saw between schools was the amount of work that was assigned for the same amount of, like, for the same class. For example, in my case, I know that, um, I'm in English HL2 this year, the same kid in, um, from another, he was a delegate from Anandale, takes the same exact class. Their exams include a three-page essay. Our exams are about 25 pages handwritten on, on the same day, like, and it just seems that there's a, there's a, it's not the same school-wise, and I think that's the other discrepancy, uh, besides just the mark, like the...
It comes down to people wanna feel like they can put in the same work at any school that they go to within FCPS and get the same grade that they would be getting at their own school.
Yeah.
And I guess some of the stress comes from, and it's like the amount of work that they put in is being reflected in their grade as it would be at a different school. So I feel like that could alleviate some stress. Like, it wouldn't alleviate all of it, like I said, I think it's inherent in just the way it works, that people will be stressed by grades, but I think it could be helped if we do like standardize the way that grades are given throughout the county.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mrs. Corbin Sanders?
Thank you, and I'll be brief, given the time constraints. Um, I am wowed by your presentation. Uh, both of my daughters participated in SAC years ago, and, um, the depth that you all went, and the quality of your report is fantastic. Um, so thank you very much. You should all give yourselves a pat on the back, we'll certainly applaud your successes. Um, couple of questions, and actually, the, following on, on the most recent conversation about grades. Have you at all looked at, um, grading consistency within the building and having different policies across departments? And then the second piece, I get a lot of comments from constituents about returning schoolwork, returning tests so that, um, students can then prepare for final exams and, uh, the cumulative tests that go on. Um, where are you all on that? What do you think about that?
Okay, sure. Um, on the returning score thing, I think that implementing SIS was great for us, because it's, sometimes teachers forget to hand out, um, grades in person, and like, my sister and I check SIS like every single day, and, um, just...
No, I'm returning the test after you've taken it. So for example, you have a math test, you get it, does it get returned to you? Or are you only given the grade and given the opportunity to remediate when you come into the classroom, but you're not able to actually take your test home and study for future exams from that test?
Okay, um, I think, well, I mean, that's widely ranging around our school too, because I know that my math teacher doesn't let us take our exams home, but she gives us time during learn, which is our study hall to study. Um, so I think that it varies, because I think cheating is one thing too, because taking home your exams and then showing that to other people is definitely a possibility that is a risk. Um, so I guess that's one thing about score returning. Um, the other thing about grading, um, is within, I think within Marshall, it's gotten better over the years, because I think my freshman year, there was definitely a, a thing where like, oh, Macandoe definitely grades harder than, uh, Hardenberg. But then as they've developed this norming system of like, uh, you obviously know what norming is, and then just having that, like, equal playing field across the whole department definitely helps. Um, but there is some discrepancies of, some teachers will say like, you don't have to turn in your HI until June 9th, and the other person says like, you don't have to turn your, uh, thing until like April, and then having the grading between those who can be unfair. So I think, um, not only is grading should be normalized across the standards, but just deadlines, and just everything about department should be, uh, more standardized. Tama?
Um, for Watson, I think we're, um, lucky that they have a lot of department meetings, even students can sometimes talk to their teachers about, um, issues that they have, um, but different things, issues in the school, for example, grading policy. So I think Watson's lucky in that we do have a general understanding among different teachers about having a general, um, grading policy. For example, um, you can retake for, um, big tests, um, within, uh, big tests but not quizzes, and it's between like a range of 75 to 80% is the limit, and teachers can kind of decide around that. Um, so at least within each department, it's, it seems pretty standardized. Um, for example, like English and math, they may have different, um, very different policies, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy that at least within like each department, um, at Watson, that the teachers have established a standardized, um, program for both teaching and for, uh, grading, so that students feel like at least, it's at least fair, as far as it can be between teachers. And then, um, with regards to your second point about receiving back tests, I'm pretty sure for every single one of my classes, I'm able to receive, uh, my, it's at my government class, I guess, I can receive my tests back. Uh, I think that's very helpful, um, because I'm able to take it home, I can, um, I can like look it up in my textbook, I can, um, correct, um, answers, I can show, show them to my, to my teacher. Um, I think it's also the teacher has to make the effort, of course, of making a new test every single year, um, or every single time they teach a new student, um, take a new class. Um, but I do, I do really appreciate it, because I can have that from like my first quarter until the very end of the year, and I take the final, I can always have it with me, so if I ever think, oh, wait, that was from a, that's a question from a similar test I had, um, back from before, I can always look that up. So I find that very helpful. Um, and again, I feel like it's just if the teacher's willing to put in the effort of making a new test every year, and I feel like it's beneficial, but I feel like, um, it definitely helps me at least, being able to take my test back.
And my last question is regarding the IB. I'm so glad that you all are so high on the ID, IB diploma. I think it's a wonderful, um, course of study and certainly, um, reflects the portrait of the graduate. So I was wondering, how many of you did middle years IB? And the second piece of it is, your I, going through the IB process, did that inform your approach to how you, um, just, you tackled the problem of health being a much more holistic, being physical, mental, emotional, spiritual, environmental?
I did not go through the NYPD project. Um, my year it wasn't required, the next year that's coming up, it is required for everyone, so, um, that's a change in our school. Um, I think that through our theory of knowledge class, we actually make those connections between each, um, subject and covering all, uh, everything you mentioned. Um, and even in our own classes, I know that in our history class, uh, my teacher, who also teaches TOK, likes to make all those references to every other class and every other well, well-beingness of us, you could say. Um, so yeah, I think that IB really does, it doesn't matter what class you're in, um, they'll always connect it to everything else that makes you, and it also, like you said, um, really does help you, well, it promotes the whole portrait of a graduate.
Yeah, neither me or Emma participated in the middle years program, but, um, I do feel like the IB diploma allowed us to open a dialogue about mental health or health awareness in general, much easier than I think AP would have. Like, I've never experienced AP before, but I know just the way, especially with Daniel what said about TOK, like, we were really able to delve into like social topics way more than I think we would have through AP classes.
Oh, I took AP classes, but, um, so I can kind of say how like, how I wish I had more of like, um, the interconnection between the different courses, because, um, like, I myself, I partake in other, um, liberal arts ideas, like I do American Nation, so I'm able to like relate economics to like history and, um, international relations and stuff like that. So, um, I'm lucky enough to be able to kind of see beyond just like my math class or just my English class, but I definitely wish that, um, my school gave me the option of having kind of like the interconnect, interconnection so that I can relate everything back to myself, or I'm studying in math, or I'm studying in English, or something that I wouldn't be exposed to, because I only have APs.
I, I agree. Um, I think the biggest part for me of understanding mental health was English, because I love English, obviously, and, um, just going through that reading Catcher in the Rye and just having the IB curriculum, um, there's so much through that, connecting with, uh, TOK and just history in general, just learning about the history of these things, how we've like developed, um, our understanding of these kind of problems, has been really interesting, which I, I'm sure you do that in AP too, and talk about Catcher in the Rye and things, but, um, um, that was really interesting for me personally, so.
So I have just a couple of questions myself and, and a couple of comments. Um, I was very glad to see the, the Google Docs that, that, um, you were able to share. That's a, that's a wonderful, wonderful tool, and I'm glad to see that you're recommending that it, um, continue and, and be updated every year. Do you have any feedback on whether, um, schools actually then adopted things that they learned about through it? Uh, do, do you have any feedback on that at this point?
I do actually, um, believe it or not, it's in our district, Evans.
Excellent.
Um, we actually host Spring Fest each year, and it's kind of, um, we reflect on Casey Schumann's death and Shina, uh, and Shinon Week, that's what we actually call the entire week. Anandale actually just had their Summer Fest on Friday, and that's actually, if you can't tell, it's the same idea. So, um, schools are using that, um, that document as, as a, as a resource, so different events that they're gonna be having in their schools, kind of what works, what doesn't work, um, even with, um, Anandale, what companies we use, how much we paid, and all these other things. And it really does create the dialogue between schools that, um, you know, we're not all just 20-something different schools, we're all just one FCPS.
That's wonderful to hear. Do they also call it Shinon Week, or they...
Um, I'm not sure what they call it exactly, I know that they have something that week. Um, I just went for the actual Summer Fest event Friday afternoon.
That's great, and Shinon has expanded too, down to the...
To all the pyramid schools, yes.
Yeah, that, that was, that was great to, to hear this year, uh, near and dear to my heart, as you know. I was delighted to see, um, your reference on slide 10 to sleep. Uh, you know, this was something that, um, you know, a few years ago, people didn't even pay much attention to it or realize the, the, the huge connection between adequate sleep and mental health. Um, so I'm, I'm thrilled that that was one of your, your, uh, goal-oriented, um, approaches, and I would love to see, um, that continue to improve, and particularly when you go to college, I don't know if it'll be easier or harder, it might not be, be easier, but, um, but hopefully you'll, um, you'll be able to, to improve. So I, I'm just glad to see the focus on it. On the, I, I did want to say, we, yesterday, last night, we got our report from the School Health Advisory Committee, um, and I don't know if we have connected what you're doing with what they're doing, but if we haven't, we definitely should, because they are working, um, they have been working on the wellness policy, and, um, and so I think they, they could certainly benefit from your thoughts as they're moving forward. They're, they're looking, uh, what we heard from them last night was about the, the metrics by which we, we gauge whether our schools are doing well or not doing well in terms of, of all these, um, these, um, wellness pieces. So, um, we should probably be sure that, that, that the students are connecting, um, with, with, uh, with that committee too. Um, I heard you on the holidays, I absolutely agree with you about the holidays. Um, we do have, um, a committee that's looking at this to see how we can, um, uh, better approach the, the holidays where a student, um, needs to be gone for, uh, one of the Eid holidays, or for Rosh Hashanah, or Yom Kippur, and make sure that, um, they don't get penalized in any way. We, we are hearing more and more about students saying, well, I have to choose, you know, and we, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't put students in a position of having to choose be, between their religious obligations and their academic obligations. So we are working on that, you know, I was glad to hear your, your thoughts on that. And lastly, I'll just, um, follow up a little bit. Um, I, I was really interested in hearing your, your answer to, to Mrs. Strauss's questions, because that's something we're, we're gonna continue to grapple with, and I hope the, the SAC does as well, give us your, uh, your views, uh, to, to your point, I don't think anyone is talking about, um, limiting it so much that we don't have full IB, I don't think that's ever been part of the conversation. I think the conversation is how, how much farther beyond full IB do some students go? And I guess I'll just ask you quickly, do, do, when you do full IB, do you pretty much do full IB, or do you, are there ways to go beyond and you just keep on going with more and more and more?
Emma's doing that. Most people, if you go beyond full IB, they'll just do a fourth HL class. Because it's required, I think people do three, SL, three HL, but then some people will go above and beyond and do four HLS.
Oh, okay.
Which is like, not necessary, but...
Well, some people like it. Some people like it.
Yeah, for a lot of people, it's not an added stress at all, but yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I do hear you, you know, but then I guess the, the other thing to consider is, well, what do we limit then? Do we limit sports practices? We made an attempt this year to, to have some guidelines in there, but we're still hearing about sports practices that go, uh, beyond what the guidelines are, you know, go for four hours a night and they're not really supposed to. Um, so, any thoughts that, that, I mean, I know three of you are, are heading, heading out, and congratulations on that, but, Emma, you're the one staying, right? So, so maybe, maybe you can take back, uh, the idea of, of just having that conversation about how do we, uh, if we were to put limits, you know, how, how would we do it? Do you do it, if you don't do it on AP and IB, if you don't put it on sports practices, you know, what do you put it on? Um, it's, it's, it's a conversation with, that we need to continue to have. So again, I just want to thank you all, this is a marvelous presentation. And good luck to each of you, uh, for the rest of the school year and at graduation, and, uh, we'll be seeing three of you at graduation, and, uh, hopefully, Emma, we'll see you back again in some other capacity. So thank you.
Hopefully you'll graduate.
Oh, and we will take a three-minute breaks for our, um, for our video recording.